I mean, I don't know. It's all. Yeah, I know.
Nine years. And he was like, you don't mind. My mind gets off.
I don't know.
Well, I did. In fact, my sister very dark.
Okay.
You know what, like we're doing, what was there, you would know.
Yeah.
We're terrible. But everybody has. That's that you take the score. I didn't put down the last one. Sunday.
Yeah. The seat is going to be.
People, but you know, the position I will just learn here. People come out here and give you your guess, and they think it's going to always change.
But it is just kind of. It's kind of. It's kind of like I said. Makes me feel good. Okay.
Well, I know it.
Your experience. If you did that, we're. So that'll take a lot of beer.
All right, we'll kick this meeting off. We will first show a roll call. We do have two members, but my assumption they're.
Yes, we have two members that next month will have two new members that will be seated and voted on at this month's upcoming Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. And then they'll be seated to replace the members that rolled out.
We do have five members present. We do have a board. Okay. So we will start with the legislative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, equal and free with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the the genus. Seajust, you have any changes to the agenda?
I did have a change. So on the Summerlin bond for that that number should be a hundred, two hundred and one thousand increasing to the twenty fifteen percent is showing an incorrect number currently on your paper. On some of the phase seven item number three.
Okay. That will be the new total be two oh one?
No, the current total is two oh one, and it will increase. And I wish I could ask for this slide.
Two thirty one?
So they increase it fifteen percent.
Okay, so they two hundred and thirty one, though, or two hundred and thirty two thousand. Okay. Last of the planning commissioners, is there any, you know, two items on the June night? Items five and six are final flats based on approved plans. When you do a public hearing, if anybody want to move those consent agenda, we could review them individually.
I'm sorry, I didn't get what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. If, since we have a public hearing, I don't know. For items five and six are final subdivision flats based on existing zoning and plan approval, if we're going to move those consent, or we can review them individually, items five and six.
No problem. We said we need to.
All right. Will that also be your approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. We got motion approval of the agenda, and we're going to move items five and six, which are both final subdivision flats based on existing property zoning to the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right. Approval of meeting minutes. The June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three meeting was a pretty short meeting. Any comments or questions about those minutes? We have a motion.
Like a motion, we have one that's written.
No, we have second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's now move on to the consent agenda. We do have items one, two, three, three with corrected staff notes as we show, and then items five and six are both final subdivision flat. We have any question about any of those items? Have you seen any items reported on?
Now, now it knows there.
Looks like item number five is the last phase of someone. Without any questions or comments, we have a motion to approve items one, two, three, five, and six as consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion, we have second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right. Item number four, we do have a public hearing, we have people signed in. This is Raymond Hirsch Parkway, commercial planning development. Kenley Horn, they're requesting recommendation to the mayor, oh, Board Mayor and Alderman to rezoning twenty-two point eight three acres from R twenty to commercial planning development, and they're looking at a preliminary master plan to go along with the zoning that will be subject to any zoning also. So these are both recommendations to the Board Mayor and Alderman. All right, Seajust, let you kick it off, and then call it.
Okay, so this has been before us before in a different form, lack commercial. Staff has gone back, we looked at the conference plan and looked how it fits that grand scheme of what we, you know, were asking for, and that was the commercial. There is some residential component of this, and you can see the staff and the conversation between staff and the developer. Also with the elevations, they did adhere to what we asked. We had several rounds, and they provided what you see in the packet now. So the engineer was, you know, worked with us to kind of accommodate that. We also had some internal discussion of their three entry exits off of Raymond Hirsch currently. We had some conversation about reducing that to two, resident three off Raymond Hirsch, and there would still be some entry exits off of, access off of the highway thirty-one W. In this plan, you see the commercial that was being proposed is, there was a McDonald's, there was a fueling center, a Goodwill, a medical facility, and so there are six lots and across Raymond Hirsch, also behind Dollar General, that's part of that property that was up for sale. So all of that would be commercial. There is some ongoing discussion. We talked about the buffer, Punklebun Swab, actually, who signed up to speak. So, you know, I've kind of relayed that to the developer that there may be some ongoing discussion with that buffer and any other comments that planning commission might have. And this isn't working, so I apologize, I send slides if someone needs to see those, but.
It looks like we got six commercial lots, is that right? Six lots, commercial or?
It's eight commercial and two.
And what is it? Is it eighty town or seventy townhouses?
Yeah.
On the north side of the.
Yes.
All right, we'll start now, kind of been introduced. We'll have a public hearing. We got two people signed up. First one, Debbie Webb, twenty-nine forty-nine, highway thirty-one W.
Thank you. Progress is one of those things that no matter how hard we try to stop it, it's going to continue. My hope is that not too long ago, it was already before the boards, and it seems, it was just yesterday, and I'm concerned with the fact that we have so much going on in Whitehouse at this time. I'm not saying that this might not be feasible, but I'm concerned, my mother owns the property that butts up to that, twenty-nine forty-five, and then the house next door. And we do have some concern, you know, I think that the number of townhomes are different than was previously, and there's commercial. But I think probably due to the fact that we just seem to have so much going on right now, would we be passing this to just get it? Are we actually talking about starting? Are we talking about just getting it ready and rezoned? I'm not quite sure where that is. But I feel like we have a lot of storefronts here already, commercial, that are unoccupied. And, you know, for the lack of wondering, you know, we're going, we have, I guess, commitments from the people that are planning on coming. But I am concerned with us having just so much to take place. We certainly have had the property many, many years, and the thing that I would ask, if this gets approved and does not get stopped, it's very important to my family that we get the opportunity to represent ourselves in the fact that as it's being developed, that will protect my mother's property, because it's going to be right up against it. And it would be something that would need to be as much, my mother is eighty-one, and she fears, obviously, with the property touching, that with townhomes and things, there could be a necessary umbrella policy to have to be, because you've got the part about children possibly coming over in open fields. So I really, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I, are we talking about just rezoning or rezoning and immediately we're going to try to get started on this?
They have, one of the requests was that they put a development schedule, and they'll speak to that, because we don't want the project starting and then just an empty construction site, so they'll be able to speak to that if.
Okay. I know we've got a lot of prime, well, we've got, it's prime property, I'm aware of that, you know, and she's got stuff on all sides over and across the street, and that's, I mean, that's progress. But at the same time, are we doing too much too soon? Do we need to let things sort of take care of themselves? And the property across the street from her in front of the parking complex is like four open, I don't know, there's nothing there, and I don't know if they're trying to get commercial business, it is commercial. And so I guess my concern would be, if you're going to pass this, my wish, my wish would be that we just hold off. But if you do pass it, you know, you're looking at a lot, a lot going on, and I just want to be there and represent her and, thank you.
One more person to sign up. Nikki Taylor, thirty-four forty-nine, Clister Road.
I actually have a request from you guys. Is there any way these can be put into the agenda so that when the agenda is online, we know what you're talking about? My, my guess is a lot of people didn't know or wouldn't speak, because the description, while it says low density, bleh, low density residential to C P U D, that that makes sense if you're on a planning commission, but the photos make sense if you're just a regular person. And those don't go into the packet until after the meeting?
I could put my staff notes up. I should, and I should have my staff notes up prior to the meeting. I'm done with them on Thursday, and we used to have them up. So I can make sure the staff notes are up beforehand, and the public can see that.
That would be awesome. I would really appreciate that, thank you. And that, and along with that, that it lists here in the agenda what exactly is happening, but that would tell us that there are seventy townhomes, which I'm admittedly opposed to seventy townhomes in that area. And I know there are a lot of us that worked on campaigns and various things in the twenty-two election that were no more. Commercial, got no problems. Residential, there are a lot of us out here who've said enough is enough, when we've got five thousand units on the books and only about fifteen hundred built. So, thank you.
Do we have anybody here to represent? If I just say I want to give a presentation, then we'll open up for discussion.
Good evening. My name is Josh Rollin, I'm with Kenley Horn, I'm representing the developer and applicant, who's also here this evening and could answer questions if there are some that come up that I couldn't. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of this, this project. I took notes of some of the residents' comments, and I want to speak to some of those directly, but for just a brief overview, so that folks who haven't had the details can kind of understand what this project is all about. This is a, a commercial P U D, it's a mixed-use commercial pub, we've got predominantly commercial uses with some urban townhome uses. You know, we feel like the frontage along Raymond Hirsch and highway thirty-one is ideal for commercial. And so, you know, one of the key ingredients to successful commercial is visibility. So we've taken every linear footage of frontage along Raymond Hirsch and along highway thirty-one, and had placed commercial there. We have gas, a gas and convenience center on the corner. We have a quick-serve restaurant right next to that on highway thirty-one. We have approximately forty-four thousand square feet of flexible retail, medical office, or restaurant-type uses. We're showing an abundance of parking for those uses. We also have another, a medium-sized box retailer, which we have been speaking with Goodwill for a new retail location for them. But one reality with retail or with commercial is you can't get solid commitments until you have your zoning in place. So I think one question that came up tonight is where are we in the process? This request is for a rezoning, to go from a, a low-density residential to a commercial pub, and we have existing commercial zoning on those two lots on the corner already. So it's trying to bring all these, these three parcels into the same zoning category so we can go and market this and get firm commitments from commercial end-users. We've been talking with medical office folks, we've been talking with retailers and restaurateurs, that there is a big demand for retail space in Whitehouse, commercials based on demand. A question that came up was when will this get developed? We have quite a bit of permitting and entitlement work to do beyond the rezoning. We know that Publix is also ahead of us in this project. That's, that's another integral component to this development. So we see following on the tails of the Publix development, probably from a timing standpoint. To speak briefly to the residential, commercial loves residential rooftops, and what we've tried to present here tonight is a residential use that is only tucked into the back, but that is more urban and walkable. We don't have driveways and garage doors on the street, they're tucked back on alleys. We have front porches and front facades on the streets and on greenways. And I think one of the key benefits to having some residential here is that folks can walk to the grocery store, they can walk to doctor's offices and to retail spaces, and we're going to reduce traffic to some extent with the ability to have a walkable mixed-use our neighbor to the north and to the east. I was a part of the original application about a year and a half ago, which was ninety percent townhomes, actually, I think it was a hundred percent townhomes. We, we heard, I heard, the concern about buffering. We tried to be intentional with this plan. We have a park next to the greenway, tried to pull the townhomes back away from that property line. We've also got the required, the city required buffer, I believe it's the, it's the D four, it's a twenty-foot buffer with very dense landscape plantings along our commercial frontage and along that townhome frontage. So that's kind of the overview. I wanted to make sure I spoke to some of the comments and concerns that we heard tonight, and we're here to answer any additional questions that you might have. Thank you. We're requesting your approval this evening, and kind of, we have been answering questions.
All right, so we'll open up for the planning commission discussion.
So question I have is, when you mentioned Goodwill and McDonald's, that's, that's, we don't know what's going in there yet, because you don't have commitments from businesses until you actually know you're going to.
Right, we, we need to have the property rezoned before they'll get.
So we don't know what's going to go.
We, we've received a lot of very, you know, intentional interest in, in those properties. I mean, this is a great corner, this is a, a great location for this type of use.
My other concern is all the entrance ways onto Raymond Hirsch, and then these two that come out on thirty-one W.
Well, we're going to take, remove one from Raymond Hirsch, that's what I was saying earlier, if, if it got approved, we recommend only two from Raymond Hirsch.
And we're going to still have the two.
They'd have to get T dot, they'd have to get T dot approval, but I mean, just from the traffic count and the traffic studies, T dot will still have to approve any entry way on the thirty-one W.
I did like the draft, the ground has been, I did like that in the hour.
I think the elephant in the room was the density in this whole piece, and we did have extensive conversations on that, on that unit count. So, I mean, we, everybody, I think, understood that the commercial is excellent, and, you know, I, I sort of defended the engineers, because they're at the beck and call of the, of the applicant. So, you know, I would have conversations with, with engineers, he would go back to the developer, and they would accommodate our request, so. I didn't want to hold the last project against you.
We're only as good as our clients. I think we got a great proposal tonight, with a lot of high-quality commercial.
No, we, we did see this a while back, and that was a big concern I had, was, I hate to say it, the seat gives up their commercial potential. I feel like this doesn't look like commercially out, all access points on my pass kind of, I actually looked, there actually, if you count the gas station, there's four of them there.
Right.
And just to clarify, the, the gas station accesses are just right in, right out. We have done a full traffic study, so we came out and did traffic counts before school let out. We've analyzed these, and honestly, what's, the way access shakes out is the more access you have, the better access you have, because it distributes trips in more areas. I think in talking with Seajust, those two, two access points kind of in front of our lot eight and lots nine and ten, kind of on the north and, and west quadrant of Raymond Hirsch, that's where we're looking to reduce one of those, and we've agreed to do that.
I have a question, this, all these commercial, they're all hypothetical, right?
That's right.
What they'll be using. And you've gone on here, commercial for a restaurant, commercial for a gas station, neither one of those has to be that use necessarily, and that's just, again, a suggestion?
Well, if, I think the, we, we believe that the restaurant and the gas station are the most likely uses for those two lots, because being on highway thirty-one and with that location, that's who's going to pay top dollars, want to be there. I, I think the other ones, those, some of the internal ones, and we've got some notes in here that gives us a little flexibility to respond to the market. Like, for instance, if somebody wanted to do one larger buildings on lots three and four instead of two, two other ones, we, you know, reserve the right to be able to kind of work with staff after our rezoning approval to, to make this work for the end-user. But to your point, we're, we don't have commitments, and we can't truly get those until we have the zoning in place. Have that, that plug, it gives us some flexibility.
And with the plug, I'll say that it's, what you approve is the, is the plan. There are, especially with densities, I know that's like him, elephant in the room, there, there, if you approve X amount of density, there's no increase in any, any densities or anything. I mean, like he's saying, with configuration of lots, that's, that's the flexibility, but the density, what we approve is what we approve in the plan, so.
So this may change, but the density will not change?
Yeah, configurations, layouts, lots, I mean, something like that would change based on, I mean.
Well, if we got an urgent care facility or a, you know, a doctor's office that wanted a different parking lot layout, a different building layout, we'd seek to accommodate that.
There's more. There's more flexibility from the planning commission on a plan like this versus if it was a R twenty zoning that has the permitted use, there's more flexibility for, for you guys.
My understanding, when you grant preliminary plan approval, plan approval, you're giving them more or less the option to go that direction, or say that's okay with us, and to what extent will we, will they come back and change that preliminary plan? The way I always look at it, if you grant preliminary plan approval tonight, subject to the zoning, then they can go with that and not have to come back for anything else.
They have to come back for final master development plan. What we tell them now, so here's, here's the, in the flexibility, what we tell them now, when they come back with final master, there's no adjusting at that point. The final master is almost like the final flat. So what we tell them now, tonight, is, is almost sort of similar to the final flat. So the flexibility is like, right now, in this discussion.
Well, I personally don't like the idea of rezoning and even making recommendations for preliminary plan approval. I don't like those two handed hand. That's just, they say you can't do it, you can, but you're kind of at the cart before horse.
Well, that's, that's, that's actually the put in process.
I know it is, but I still say there's too, too many ifs in here.
Well, like I said.
They don't have the solid, I know it is, I understand it, but still don't like.
I think the key is, like, like Tim was saying, if, you know, lot three and four had those big commercial buildings, but all of a sudden, if they wanted to bring residential up there where lot three and four commercial was, I think that'd be a deal killer.
Couldn't do that.
I don't think this.
Then they couldn't do that, right?
Not without, I mean, they could kind of make the request, and it'd be a formal, basically, master plan amendment.
Would they have to come back to us?
And.
You know, we, we put some specific notes in there that give us a little flexibility on the commercial and no flexibility on residential. It's like, if we want to change a residential, we put a note in here that says we got to come back to planning commission.
So you could decrease it, but you can't increase it, and you can't move it.
Correct.
Couldn't, he still have to come back with decrease and.
I mean, there's nothing says they can't make a formal request, but I think it'd be very, because the last plan was approved pretty heavily, because there was no resident, no commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other question? I know that my big concern looking at it, I kind of like, from what we saw before, we were asking for this, I think long-term is a big question, so do the timing of it, that'd be up to the elected board on that, but this is a number of access points, just like a lot.
Yes, I agree.
Ah, everybody knows that thirty-one, you go down thirty-one, all you're doing is stopping.
Right.
Somebody turning left in front of you. My pass does give you a little bit more free flow, and I like to sit and just get all.
Well, and I'll point out that there's a, a continuous turn lane along Raymond Hirsch, you know, it's, it stretches a good distance away from highway thirty-one today, and then it picks up again just off the map here. So we would be widening the road for a short portion to have a continuous turn lane, which would reduce that.
It's going to be interesting to have Publix in this.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I like the commercial, I, I don't like the residential. I, I mean, I think the plan is fine, but just given what we've got on the, on the books now, and, and the tone during last year's election, I just, I think the timing is not, it's not great for that. The rest of it, I think, is fine.
So can we work with part of it and leave part of it out? Yes, no? I mean, it, it sounds like everybody's relatively comfortable with the commercial aspect of this, and obviously, y'all would like to do it all.
But we asked them to come back and scale back their residential, and we want it more commercially.
Right.
And that's what they've done.
Different developer, though?
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, it's the same property. And they've got, so they, they did give us the commercial, the, the townhomes they're putting in, the driveways, the garage thing, it's on the back, they, they look neat. I don't know about hamstringing it like that. The mixed use is kind of what the city had been leaning towards, it's what we've talked about for years over the city center, and this is kind of what we were talking about. But that's just my thought on it. I live here, and I deal with the congestion too, and get frustrated sometimes, but.
I don't know, like I said, I mean, I don't know if.
What, what did the traffic study refer to that? Did y'all get a chance to review it?
We looked at it, I mean, but the, the bottom line is, there, there are very little effects on the off-site roads, and, and really even the eagers, eagers, you can see there, was basic one direction on each one. So that, as far as external effects, there was not, not a big deal. However, along the lines of what y'all are talking about with the, the access, we have not looked at that level of design criteria, and I do think it will change, and, and not only from the city's perspective, but, but also from T dot's inclusion into those conversations also. So some of the ones that jump out to me, yeah, I agree with what y'all were saying, reducing the number on, on Raymond Hirsch, but like these right in, right outs that are so close to the nearby signal right there, that's probably going to be an issue. And I'm not sure about the other one on thirty-one W. It could be. It could be, but I just see some of those that are possible changes, but I don't think they affect really what we're talking about tonight.
Any other comments?
So, T-DOT's going to have to actually finalize work when it comes out to this ground on 31.
Yes, Jim. And I understand, you know, the gas station, they want that easy access and the one there on the bypass, it is so close to 31 intersection. And, you know, it's definitely something, if it does get approved, could come out that drive right beside them and those are 50 feet apart. This is a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, like Martin was saying, this is not, we're not approving this plan, any approval of both is subject to the rezoning. So, the zoning is the master plan, but it is, we're noting that both of them are going forward. Those requests, whatever it is. Was there any other questions before we make a motion? Would y'all want to see a revised plan with revised access points?
I can see a revised plan with the residential.
Yeah, the last word from us on the residential is it's very hard to market and sell res, or commercial without visibility and without good access. So, we tried to give as much as we could with the best intentions on the commercial and really minimize the amount of residential, but we feel like it's a compatible use that the city's comp plan does speak to mixed use in this area. And we feel like adding some other uses is going to add more commercial tax dollars on us. You've got more people and more folks frequenting these businesses on a regular basis, you know, because you've got rooftops there and you're minimizing trips out and across town when they can get to the grocery store and get to the convenience store, get to a doctor's office, get to a retailer or a restaurant without having to get out on Raymond Hirsch or get out on Highway 31. So, I think there's merit to it. I certainly respect the town council and the planning commission's concerns.
I know that one of the things that came up the last time we saw the whole residential thing, and that was, it seemed the intent was to use all that residential property, rental property, you could have absentee landlords. Is that a similar thing on this residential that you intend, that is going to market it for basically apartments?
My experience with the four rent is they need a critical mass. They need that 150 units in order to operate a rental community. I would expect, I can't promise, that these would be for sale because of just the unit count. There's fewer.
All right, any motions on this? If there's anything, like I said, if we have ability, if there's other questions, if you all feel more deferral or if you're just ready to vote.
So, is our, are we recommending if we make a motion to, for the rezoning or to approve the plan?
Both. They're basically, in a planning development, they are one and the same.
Yeah. And if there's something you wanted to see different in this, this would be the time to let them know. I mean, like I said, that's why I say flexibility, this would be the time to say, "Hey, this might need to go here," or, you know, we could, I mean.
And if I could, just the city engineers comment about access points, that will get vetted through T-DOT and through the city, through, you know, final plan design. And so, you could ask us to come back to planning commission to change some access points, but we still won't have all those answers. But I would request if your concerns are access is that you give us the opportunity to make it through zoning and then come back to you for the final plan that gives us that timeline to work with T-DOT.
So, any motion if it was to recommend, definitely if y'all feel comfortable, that would be something to note, that access points could shift and change and reduce. That's what's on here.
Can we?
Yeah.
Can we?
He goes, I actually.
Well, I mean, to me, I don't think it's worth knowing. I think it's a deep dive into the design criteria that's not going to come to a long ways down the road.
Am I wrong in assuming that in listening to y'all, that there's not as much concern about the commercial aspect of this as there is about the residential aspect of it?
Me anyway.
My concern is the access points, really. I don't mind residential and I think the commercial is what we asked for, but all this traffic come out on the Hirsch and.
That's my concern. So, many access points for.
But from my understanding, from listening to our guys on T-DOT, is that that's something that's going to get washed out when they meet up with T-DOT and do all that?
Yeah, they have the ultimate approval. We could.
If we prove this day, are we stuck to three entrances? I mean.
Unless you put something in motion, I would think.
Yeah, you can put stipulations.
Staff asked us today if we would eliminate an access point on Raymond Hirsch and we said that we were willing to do that. So, if you would list that as a condition, we would agree.
I mean, I definitely think reducing the one on the northern end and the gas station would be tied into the next one.
Right, I think so too.
The 31, I think where it's at, it's a little bit different. I know 31 is from just the T-DOT, but they are further from the intersection. That one right there, wow, it's right in it, so.
You mean the one that's kind of.
The one coming out of the gas station, I mean, it's right in the turn lane.
Yeah, right, right, yes.
And if it could be taken back and tied into the drive next to it that lines up with the Dollar General entrance, that's one there, then one on the upper end. I definitely think lots nine and 10, I don't see the need for two, I mean, I'm sure that it's commercial, they want us to access that point, want the double points on nine and 10, I definitely think it'd be consolidated. I've seen all the commercial developments, a lot less access and greatly successful. But that'd be, that's my big concern. That's through the last meeting, we talked about it, some residential, I don't think it's a bad thing. Except that's a timing issue for Mayor Alderman, while I figure out when they review, that's why they review this, but as far as the master plan, the access points is my concern other than that. It's a great, it'd be a great commercial center. That's what I see in the commercial in the townhomes, I know still residential, but I mean, I see the commercial first.
So, how would we phrase this? I don't think it'd draw, we can control the, take, not get on one of these entryways.
I think we just, I mean, if you all feel comfortable going forward with the preliminary master plan, as it's shown, to say with reduction in access points.
That would be.
On 31, possibly, on Raymond Hirsch, and possibly 31.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, a motion, that's most to approve.
To approve, to recommend.
Recommend to Board of Mayor and Alderman, most approved, recommend to Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Reduce access points.
With the preliminary man and the rezoning. We have a second?
Can I, before you guys vote, can I ask a question about if he gets to Board of Mayor and Alderman, about the change in this, the Board of Mayor and Alderman still may have concern on this, I just wanted to put that out there and that would be a part of the approval or deny whatever when he gets to Board of Mayor and Alderman as well.
Because we've not proven a pretty good way of recommending.
I just wanted to make that point.
Ideally, they would come, the Board of Mayor and Alderman would reduce access revised plan for you, but that would be up to them, that's what they want.
Would it be good to get a second before a continuing discussion?
All right, yeah, good point. So, do you have a motion? Get a second?
No, here's my seat.
There's no second, that's motion fails. That particular motion fails, that means you can't have another motion.
I mean, I would second it, if you all feel comfortable, me as chairman of second just to get the vote taken?
You can.
Okay, well, I'll make the second based on always motion, or second it, I guess. Motion second, we want to vote?
We'll do a hand vote.
We can. All in favor for recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
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 Okay. Thank you.
So, the motion didn't pass, but we weren't denied either, so can I just ask a question about the residential? Just, I guess I'm procedurally in the chair.
Well, somebody can make a motion to deny the zoning change if they want to. That would bring closure to what you're asking for. Or this recommendation can forward right to the Board of Mayor and Alderman as it is, which is going to anyways. They may just now deny the, for it to go forward. So, I would say that probably kind of ends it, but I don't think we really need to have another motion to deny.
My only question was if the residential is the issue, which it sounds like it is, if we were to reduce the unit count to, say, 55, a number less than what you're looking at, is that something that would make the planning commission more comfortable?
That would be.
I mean, because we value your approval and we want to work with.
If it were reduced considerably.
And what is that definition?
How many you got?
Seventy.
So, 70 or 80?
Seventy-two or 28, it's 70. What, to 50? I mean, if we took, if we, there's enough land up there to reduce that and add green space and add some buffer and reduce unit count, we want to work with you.
I mean, I think the planning commission could review, I know we're not supposed to just keep reviewing, if something come in next month different with reduction, we could review it again, but.
I mean, much like the access points, if you wanted to say that applicant agreed to, and when we go to council, we could have that plan ready for them with 50 units on there and it's just, I don't mean overstep, I just wanted to offer that.
Well, that's the thing, we're in position, we can't design something, we can't say, "We'll like 50 units." I think if you come in with something, I don't know the ones that voted against it type of change.
Would that change?
Your feelings about it, but I don't know, you really have to answer that once I'm like that, but.
With the number of residential units and access points and any residential, those are my concerns.
Are you thinking about bringing back the planning commission with the changes that they're asking for?
We certainly would if you felt like, and I can't ask for a commitment tonight and I'm just curious if we can't act you with reduced access points, reduced units, because we wouldn't want to waste your time if we couldn't, so.
I'd say it needs to be reduced by half.
I mean, Jeremy, do you think at this point, this really comes Alderman decision to talk about, I mean, this planning commission made a recommendation not to approve it.
Right, so they're going to follow the plan, most likely they're going to follow the planning commission's recommendation. It's very seldom that they override the planning commission's recommendation. They have, but very seldom that happens. So, I mean, if you're wanting to have them bring back another plan that you can look at, that you feel more confident and recommending with a positive, then there's a better chance it's going to get through the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Got you.
But it's going to have to be, you know, something that we all think is, you know, you can get majority of you to think is a good plan.
It's still, I don't know if this board are here to negotiate, like the Board of Mayor and Alderman has a lot more, you know, they're elected to make decisions, this board is appointed to review what's brought to us.
They don't usually get into the details either, so.
That's fair.
You know, that's why the boards, they rely on the various boards and commissions to give, you know, give recommendations to them.
If you, if you reduce the amount of residential dwelling or whatever, in doing that, would you make them nicer, I mean, would they be?
It would likely be a different kind of unit. It would maybe be single-family or a duplex-style unit as opposed to a more dense townhome.
Or maybe it's more. I think in your real shot, you got it is going to be single, it's going to have to be single-family, a lot less than 70. Otherwise, I think, even if it passed this board, I mean, I'm not speaking for the whole Board of Mayor and Alderman, but I think you'd have an uphill battle there.
But those townhomes are single-family, they're just not, you know, separate dwellings and attached.
I mean, well, we could, they might come back in a similar type, but as duplex, you know, pairs instead of fours and fives like we've got in there.
The word duplex doesn't, that's a dirty word.
How about a three unit? But this is good feedback and I appreciate it.
Sneak of the townhome.
It sounds like definitely, it might be worth the time bringing revised plan in with those reductions to talk about, but.
At least we could see what you're thinking.
Okay.
Other than time, would that, I don't know if that's supposed to matter to us or not, but would that be a lot of extra, a tremendous amount of extra expense for you folks to redo this and would it be something, obviously?
Yes, I mean, there is expense. I mean, and that's why I don't, I'm not here to horse trade and it's not your job to do that either, but we would be willing to make, you know, verbal commitments that go on record and then it'd be better for us to be able to make those revisions between now and the council meeting versus having to come back to planning commission, but because I'd have to go back to my client and say, "Are you okay with that?" And if so, can, are you comfortable? But, I mean, if the planning commission said we would vote to recommend approval of plan 40 residential units and the commercial with reduced access, that's the plan we take to council.
I think we want, I also, how we could vote for something we haven't seen. I understand what he's saying.
I understand what he's saying too. I mean, he's trying to save them an extra month or two, you know, getting their passage through, but, you know, they have the right to take, direct this non-recommendation to council and.
We certainly don't want to take a recommendation that doesn't, isn't an agreement, so it's why we're willing to work with you.
I guess if you made the votes and they couldn't withdraw the application, it's too late.
But definitely bringing back next month, something, or whenever, something that's changed would be a different application.
Is it, it's too late to ask for a deferral, is that what you're saying? I mean, could we say defer and let us come back if you're not willing to, so.
Yeah, you already voted on it.
Okay.
If somebody wants to make a motion to defer, you guys can do that too.
Are you thinking about reconsidering to defer it? So, we're saying, we'd have to make a motion to reconsider it, we'd have to vote on that and then defer it.
And the applicant would have to do the withdrawal or will we defer?
Well, it sounded like he requested defer. If we feel comfortable, we'd want to rescind it to defer it. We just have to rescind our vote, I mean, it's not odd doing this, but.
My problem is, you know, I wasn't mature in my motion.
Well, you made the motion, I guess we'll, me and you, if you feel.
I'm comfortable with it.
So, withdrawing the request to deny, deny a recommendation to defer it. Okay, I'll second that. Have it come through, motion second.
Yeah, we'd like to bring another plan to you.
Motion, of course, that's motion second, everybody in favor of deferral?
Deferral by applicant or deferral by planning commission?
Well, that's, we defer it, based on the comments they made tonight. We deferred it, we're about to not vote on it. Deferring it to give them another, a chance to revise it based on discussion. That's all it. All right, all in favor?
You have enough information, you think you can sit forward?
All in favor of deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll leave the both comments here in the comments.
All right, one more item. Item number seven, the Smile Center, greenlit design, this is a site plan approval for a 5,000 square foot building. This is already zoned, so this is a site plan administrative matter. Sieges, you can go kick us off.
Yeah, they're going to go in front of trucker supply. Site meets all staff requirements. I think the elevations are good. You can see the comments that staff had to, to the applicant and back and forth, so.
And it does look like it's using existing truckers' black, there's no additional access on 31.
Correct.
I think it looks right. So, any comments?
Well, since I'm directed the challenge, which part places voting on? Does I, I'm southeast and south west? That's why we see that we're doing it for you.
It's southeast.
Okay, is that, is that the one? Okay.
Do we know what's going in the, where they currently are?
In the area where I had, I didn't, I know Bill Wolf's building makes it.
What does he go, remind me where he's going next to that?
He's building the outer for himself.
Yeah, I saw him clear. So, we don't know what's going to happen with the old Smile Center location?
It won't be long.
Different prospects, but I haven't heard anything.
Do we have anybody here representing, any comments or questions?
Commercial.
He's coming up, just to give your name.
Because Beasley with greenlit design, I think this was explained well, but I think y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Y'all have any comments or questions about it?
Does it show where the sign, just one thing?
I believe we've shown the, the post sign.
I know it's in the ceiling, I'm just curious. It's not so.
They'll have a monument sign. I remember we were discussing the tractor supply when they did the outlaw rezoning. There will be a monument sign 100 feet away from, has to be, I think, 150 feet away from the existing tractor supply sign.
All right, you have a question, a comment?
Just to put out there also, there was a payment from Tractor Supply with the sidewalk, because we had the access grant, well, the T-DOT grant for the hallway cross intersection with the sidewalk. And so since it's not a sidewalk currently in front, we didn't make Tractor Supply, you know, put it out there, but we did give us a payment in that. So that'll be part of this project. Whatever we do, get the grant going.
All right, so we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the site plan with Smile Center.
Motion second, approved, all in favor, say aye? Any votes? Guess that's it. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?